I'm gonna go through a few slides on the budget. This is the public hearing of the 2018-19 budget. And this is being held by the Board of Selectmen. And Jim is here, and Ralph is here, and Lou is here from the Board of Selectmen. And we have many Board of Education members here as well. And our town clerk is here, so we will get started. This will be a brief presentation. I have to go back to town hall for an event. So as Philip is giving his presentation, hopefully he'll be back right now. He's shared with me a lot of information. Okay, so here's the proposed town budget. We're gonna go through some of the highlights for 2018. But before we get started with that, I wanted to just go over some of the things that we're either in the middle of or that we've completed from 1718. As many of you know, we've replaced the sidewalks along town property on Main Street, which is the Brownstone Intermediate School and the town park. Waverly Avenue, which is near the senior center, and Fairview Street, all along Town Hall and Veterans Memorial Park. CL&amp;P or Eversource has put in all LED lights. And fortunately, we're saving some money, which we're very happy about. They pay to put the lights in. We pay a little bit more for that, for the installation, but the usage has decreased. So Tom Robinson's very happy to report those bills are coming in a little less. The other thing that we've implemented is a capital lease program, which is in this year's budget. And it is new lease cars, it's been a new backhoe, some other pieces of equipment for public works. And it's really been a successful program in terms of making sure we can take care of the needs of the town. We have new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning put in here at the library. We put in new generators at the Co-Avenue Sewer Pump Station. As well as, we've done painting on the front porch of the Town Hall. We took the lead out and put in new paint on the front porch. We've done furnaces at Fire Company 1 and the town garage. We're very proud of our town clerk and our finance director for implementing a convenience for our customers and residents in that they can now use credit cards to pay for things in the town clerk's office. As well as within the Parks and Recreation Department, they now have online registration, which will be very helpful for that department. And I believe they also pay online, correct Tom? They can if they wish to. Also during 1718, back in early February, Brainerd Place was approved. I just spoke with Dan Bertram to get an update for the project. And he told me he'll be putting in the demolition permits to take down the buildings that will not be utilized. He's completed step one of three phases for the DOT approval. So that project is moving along. Connecticut Pharmaceuticals, which is the marijuana growing plant under the bridge, they put an addition on, I think they're in the process of it, I know your pool isn't there. We all, I think, have visited Adams Food Store. That was a multimillion dollar renovation, which we're also very grateful and I think very much used. 185 Marlborough Street is that new mini stores that are on Marlborough Street near Subway. And the owner of that has come in. He thinks he has a tenant. I'm talking with the tenant, and there'll need to be perhaps some changes to the use table and zoning. So more on that to come should it proceed. We've also going to see in May, the ribbon cutting of the Airline Trail, that is a fully grant funded project in cooperation with Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. As well as, Richard Kelsey and staff have done many of the safety improvements that were mentioned in that very thick tie-in bond report on water and sewer. So pleased to announce that. We now have a new senior bus, which we purchased in cooperation with Cromwell. So Cromwell uses that bus on certain weeks, and then it comes over to Portland, and it's used in Portland. This is our second initiative with doing purchasing of large equipment with this town of Cromwell. It seems to be a successful way to minimize cost and maximize usage. We have put out to bid so far, the sidewalks and the town park. The Spring Street water main and road replacement is ready. It has not gone up yet. But those are projects that are part of the 2016 authorization that the voters voted in for 2016. So if you look at the budget for next year, there's certainly some new plans. In terms of economic development, it'll be the implementation of Brainerd Place. It's gonna be a very busy project as far as approvals of building permits, as well as demolition, and hopefully going toward the completion. I think they're in year one of the four-year build, the phase one. A total of eight years for two phases. So they're proceeding nicely. In terms of the riverfront, the project that we had to get some information on a pipeline, you might know that from some of the hearings that we've had. I had a meeting today. Seller is now fully aware that they own that pipeline. And they'll be getting back to us in terms of how they will manage what they need to do to bring that into compliance before we proceed with bringing it back to the voters. We have many other projects that'll be going on in terms of economic development, some of which are still in the planning stages. So I'm not at liberty to explain them, but there are some projects along Route 66 that we anticipate this year that will be coming in. So I'm pretty excited about that. We'll move on. The Rid 17 Town Park, we expect to break ground on that this spring. We expect that the sidewalk project will proceed also late spring into the summer. And the Spring Street improvements, we haven't identified a date for that project yet. We plan, if this budget is approved and proceeds, to replace the windows on the bath of Brownstone School. That will be, I think, the third and last phase of the window replacement that is very necessary. Not only for the safety and the comfort of students and people in the room, but I think also energy safety. We had a nice tour this weekend, and it was chilly next to those windows. So I think that'll be a fine improvement. Fire Company 2 has some leaking in their roof. And there's also some dollars set aside for the bond project to replace that roof and eliminate the leaking that's there. Cheek Shay has the architects that we've gotten bids from, so he'll be reviewing those to determine how to proceed. The specifics within the budget, a budget is $34,380,384 proposal. As you know, this is the first phase of the budget adoption. The next phase will be April 3 and 4, where the selectmen will sit, analyze, perhaps add, subtract, and change the budget. So it represents overall everything, including debt service, as well as capital, general government, and Board of Education, a 2.18% increase as of today. I always like to show total expenditure increases over a phase of time. So you can see from the chart, in 2014, a little over 1%, a little over 2%. 16 was 1.76, and so forth. The number from 2018 is a little bit higher, and one of the reasons is when we budgeted and passed the budget, it was before the legislature and the governor passed the budget. And that reflected some changes in the way education dollars came to us. So dollars that were ordinarily going directly to the Board of Education came to the town government, and now it's flowing back. Some changes from the legislative work that went through, so maybe at some point we'll further discuss that week before the event and how that's going during the course of this year. The capital items, I mentioned some of these already. In addition to the windows, there's a new dump truck body for the highway and a new reporting system for police crime detective. They're requiring us to purchase $100,000 new reporting system, or we would not be in compliance. So that is in the budget. Within the LoSiP grant, there's some allocations for park and field improvements, as well as municipal parking lots. This is a grant program through the state, and it can only be used on municipal projects, unfortunately. Cannot be used for any Board of Education used properties. As many of you know, there is a large reduction in state revenues, over $1 million, almost $1.2 million, less than what we had budgeted for this year. So that is equivalent to 1.4 mils. One mil is $820,000. So the money that has been eliminated is 1.4 mils, if nothing else happened within the term. Within the grant list, the grant list had a slight improvement. For every mil, the value went up $4,114. And that gives us a total of $135,000 just from the grant list, if you kept the current mil rate. Also, in terms of revenue, we're looking at an increase in fees due to the building permit fees that we're expecting, about $184,000 from the Brainerd Place. So that would be new dollars in terms of building permit fees, which helps mitigate some of the needs that we have for revenue. As I explained earlier, the 1.42 mils would represent the dollars that the state has withdrawn from the town. About $800,000 of that is education cost sharing money. The rest is general fund monies. The .56 is a typical request at this point in terms of a mil for expenditures, which the total is 1.98 mils, as the proposal is today. And this shows you again the tax revenue in terms of how taxes have changed over the last several years. We tried to keep them less than 2%. And this year would also be less than 2% if we didn't have to change it in the state revenue. Whenever you look at budgets, I think it's the one year that we approve, but it's very important for us to look at trends and to look at how we're trying to do new things, improve the town, but at the same time not go above inflation in terms of the costs and what we're doing. Within the water and sewer budgets, there's less than a 2% increase predicted for water. And I think it's slightly higher for sewer. And those are the dollars that would be requested. The selectmen passed the water and sewer budget. This is a public hearing that includes general government, water and sewer, other funds for education. But we don't vote on the water and sewer budget. The authority for water, the authority for sewer is the Board of Selectmen. And sometimes they have separate authorities, but by charter, the selectmen have the authority to put out the budget, to change the fees after a public hearing, and to also oversee those utilities. The Water and Sewer Commission are advisory only. Just wanna highlight that tonight is a workshop at 7:00. And then deliberations, which is when we really start to analyze, change, and make recommendations, would be April 3 and 4. Once the budget is passed, on April 11th, thereabouts, we can go a little earlier or a little bit later, it becomes the Board of Selectmen approved budget. And that is the budget that then goes to a town meeting. There is the opportunity, if there's, is it 5% Brian, of the electorate that shows up can amend the budget. And that's over like 350.
Yeah, we have six, well, the registrars are doing a canvass, so it's gonna cut down the register voters, but probably about 6,000, so yeah, about that.
If that number doesn't change the budget, it becomes more or less a hearing. And then the required referendum is Monday, May 14. So now we're going to move on to the Board of Education. So there'll be a brief break, and so you can...
Hello, Dan. Good evening, sir. How are you?
And I will return as soon as I can. And Lou here will monitor the public hearing.
Do I point to there or to the device or to the computer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Philip O'Reilly. I'm the superintendent of schools here in Portland. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Ann Burke, who is my assistant for Business Affairs, business manager, and Charles Britton, Dr. Charles Britton, who's in the back, who is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. And there are four or five board members here. Thank you for coming out tonight. My task, I have a dozen slides here to share with you tonight, to bring you through the budget process, to share with you some of the priorities that we've accomplished here in the district thus far this year, and those objectives that we want to accomplish with our new proposed budget. So we're in the 21st century, and schooling has changed dramatically in the 21st century. And these are some of our priorities that are board-approved priorities and state-required priorities. And I underline state-required priorities because some of these things that we're moving forward with are a result of some of the, either federal education laws or state laws that have changed. Very excited with our reading and writers workshop program, which is ongoing in its second year of implementation in grade K through 5. And we are just beginning to roll that out as a middle school program as well. Our science curriculum that emphasizes inquiry and problem solving is in the rollout phase right now, very introductory phases. Teachers are writing very important curriculum units and designing assessments and getting training from our state support. We have a new mathematics program, both for the K-5 and our middle school as well, for the Portland Middle School. We have active intervention teams. What do I mean by intervention teams? We have teams of teachers and specialists who are working together to devise intervention strategies for students who may be experiencing social, emotional challenges in school or academic challenges as well. So those teams are now active. We have an effective use of our assessments now to monitor student growth. When most of us in this room went to school, the purpose of assessments was for a grade. Well, right now, we're shifting, because the purpose of assessment is to monitor growth and then devise new teaching to help all students move forward. It's a much more student-centered process for educating students in the 21st century. And then, of course, as most of you probably know, our focus on culture and climate is so important in all of our buildings. Not only do we need a set of common expectations about how both children and teachers work together, we also need to have a set of rules for our climate, so that students are coming to school feeling safe and ready to learn. So these are some of what defines 21st century learning. So our budget priorities. As always, we have, and if you were here last year or any of the three, four previous years where I've been superintendent, you've seen our teaching and learning priorities. They are free. If you'd like to take one tonight, please feel free to take one. We are moving forward with these priorities. This is not a, I say it every year, this is not a structured plan. It really is a call to action for our administrative team and our teachers. And so I invite you to, I'll leave some here, and I invite you to take a look at them. What are we doing with these teaching and learning priorities? Well, curriculum, we're working towards an aligned K-12 curriculum. That means when students start at Valley View, and then move on to Gildersleeve, and on to Brownstone, and on to Portland Middle School, and then back up to the high school, that there's a continuum of instruction. That it isn't based on just what the teacher wants to teach, it's based on what the curriculum that the teachers have designed with the support of our curriculum leaders. We have assessments that really need to be redefined now. So both our summative, our end-of-unit tests, and then our formative assessments now need to be aligned to the standards that we're being told by state and federal governments that we should teach, whether it's the Common Core state standards, whether it's the new science standards, new social studies standards. And there are a great number of standards, new standards that we must now teach. And of course, if you have new teaching and learning, if you have new curriculum and you have new assessments, you have to start looking at how you teach. And that teaching does fundamentally have to change in the 21st century. We are moving forward with student-based instruction, where we are working very hard to set up our classrooms, not just teaching to the whole classroom, but teaching to the needs of the various students. And that takes a lot of training and effort on the part of our teachers. Quickly, our curriculum priorities are Atlas Rubicon, what's called, which is a platform that we use, an online platform for recording all of our curriculum, so that all of our teachers can see all of our curriculum. Not just grade three, not just history at the 10th grade level, but the entire spectrum of social studies, or science, or reading, or English language arts. Other curriculum priorities, as I mentioned, the readers and writers workshop, where the Bridges Math Program is the one for K-5, and our illustrative math, new illustrative math program is for the Portland Middle School, our middle school math program. And then we have, as I said, assessment priorities. This is a list of all the new assessments that teachers are learning how to use now. And they are, they range from the top one, the Fountas and Pennell Reading Assessment, which is a very specific type of reading assessment to really determine where students, what levels students are reading, all the way to the third item, the interim assessment blocks. Those are state-generated assessments that we use to prepare kids for our standardized tests. So those are some of our priorities. And then, of course, our instructional priorities. As I mentioned, that really student-centered, personalized, differentiated teaching process, teaching to all the new standards that we have. And then that last bullet here, teaching that promotes inquiry, growth, mindset, motivation, and being culturally responsive. What do we mean by that? It just means that it is more student-centered than a teacher in the front of the classroom teaching to 25 students. So let me take you through the budget process. The original budget requests, so back in September and October, believe it or not, we begin that process in the Portland Public Schools, where all of the building administrators, central office administrators, and perhaps curriculum leaders, some of our teachers who have specific responsibilities in a department, submit to Ann Burke the first numbers, if you will, those requests that they have. And when those requests came in, it was a whopping 8.12%. Now, given what First Selectwoman Bransfield just spoke about with the reductions in state funding from the state of Connecticut, clearly I knew that there was no way that 8.12 was gonna work this year. So Ann and I sat down many multiple meetings, and we brought that 8.12 down to 2.34. And that is technically what was originally the superintendent's proposed budget. How did we do that? We made staff reductions, we made departmental and school-level decreases. We really, we really worked hard. I've been in this business and process a long time, and this year is perhaps the most challenging year that I had to even get to 2.34%. And obviously, we wanted to limit the personnel costs. So that meant we were really cutting on all of our technology. We were cutting back just to get to 2.34 on all those proposals that the division heads had submitted to me. We were cutting back, really cutting back on health insurance, our anticipation of health insurance costs. So that was a challenge. And then to come to the Board of Ed with a 2.34%, but also being able to say to the Board, yes, this is my proposed budget, but we have an $800,000-plus shortfall in revenue from the state of Connecticut. And we need to take some responsibility for that as a school district. And so the Board of Ed understood that and unanimously adopted an 8 point, I mean, I'm sorry, a 0% budget. I want to reiterate, the Board adopted a 0% budget. What did that mean? So now it really meant that I was cutting into positions. So here we have the cuts that were made of positions. I believe there are eight there. Kindergarten through grade four, elementary positions, secondary teacher, a special ed teacher, a custodian, and a library media assistant. Now, some of those positions are cut because we didn't fill them. So we had a custodian who left this year. That position has not been filled. We had a library media assistant who retired last month. That position was not filled. We had two special education teachers retire. We believe we'll only hire one. We believe we will only hire one. And I'll get to special education at some point. So let me talk a little bit about this piece up here. In the past, in those six grades, I'm sorry, in those four grades, we had six sections of class with class sizes ranging from 17 to 22. We've had some reductions in 3 and 4, but our class size is around low 20s for grades 3 and 4, or what will be grades 3 and 4 next year. Kindergarten in grade 1, which is a very, very important time for learning, for our youngsters, we had a kindergarten enrollment right now for next year, now we're talking about next year, of 71 students. And so if you divide that by five sections, it's somewhere around 17, 16, 17 kids, children per classroom. We also have a lower-than-expected grade 1 by a few students. So we're reducing a section in each of those grade levels. So the class size may go up, may increase by one, two, three students. But we had to make some difficult decisions, and we felt like we were still respectful of those class-size limitations that the Board had established in its Board policy. In fact, we were falling still short of those, or we were, our class sizes were very solid in terms of the teacher-to-student ratio. What else do we do? We reduced the anticipated insurance premium increase. Now, when we did our budget originally in December, late December, and then submitted it the first week in January, we were hoping that the increase in health insurance would be somewhere around 13%. Yes, that sounds, that is correct, we were hoping. We have subsequently found out that it really is gonna be closer to 15%. So we have a built-in problem in our budget already. But we did reduce our increase from what we thought it would be, from 15 to 13. We decreased special education by 10, technology by 10. So these are the departments. And then we had a floor scrubber that we had promised Paul Bankston that we would purchase for him, because we've been holding off for a few years, and we cut that as well. So our other budget challenges, as I just said to you, we have a medical insurance premium. The middle bullet here is really going to fall at 15%. So we'll have to make up that difference within our budget. We have escalating special education costs. Now, I've been in this business for 36 years, 37 years. I have never seen such an increase, and such a rapid increase in the numbers of students with special needs that have actually moved into our district. And remember that we're responsible for educating all children. And that means their entire education. And if their education requires an individualized ed plan with individualized transportation or any support, that really, obviously, dramatically impacts our budget. So again, that happened, but this year... So again, that happened, but this year continues to increase. And I think statewide, most districts, I'm hearing from my colleagues, are experiencing the same thing. So the last bullet is just that we may have to consider additional options to, to make up for some of those top two bullets right now. We also have some capital needs. We had a great walk with the Board of Selectmen on Saturday morning, and the Board of Education, where we identified these projects. These are ongoing needs, and they're listed here. Asbestos abatement in both of our, two of our elementary schools. We, we talked about the window replacement, our high school track is in need of attention, and eventual overhaul, overhaul within the next few years. Gilder sleeve parking lot has some significant needs, if you have a student who attends there, I think you'll understand that. And then we also have some security issues. Gilder sleeve school is the only school in the district, does not have a security foyer. And to make matters worse, every window and door is a single-pane window and door at Gilder sleeve school. This is a serious concern and needs to be addressed shortly. And then, of course, our, our parking lots in secondary schools need resurfacing. The Honorable Carl Johnson just walked in, and this is one of his projects, and I support it totally. And then we have structural and cosmetic projects. We need to do a better job as a school district of, of keeping up with these ongoing projects, whether it's painting, whether it's replacing equipment, whether it's parking lots, whether it's chimney repairs. And so here's a list of those ongoing costs that really do require, maybe not every year, but we need to keep up with them, and need to have a schedule for repair. And so that is one of our priorities in this budget as well. So there you have it, the, the public schools outlined for the coming year.
Thank you. You want to add something, or should we break this up? So this closes our, our hearing for now, and then in about 10 minutes, we'll open, that's what it was posted at, at seven o'clock, hearing for the next part of the budget hearing. So relax, and we'll get to it in 10 minutes.
But it is certainly worthwhile. And it was dedicated to the Estabrook and Coleman families. The donations that were given to the fire department on behalf of their loved ones and friends paid for the AED at the town hall. And it's really a very important donation, and it was really a nice ceremony. So the families were there, and two fire trucks were there with a rescue vehicle, but there was no fire, no emergency, in case anyone asks. It was just a nice, nice thing. So pardon my disappearance, but I'm back, and we're ready to start our workshop. I'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock, and we haven't done this in a while, so I would invite us to say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we'll turn the departmental budget workshop over to Tom Robinson. Good evening.
Hello. Do you want to start it off with questions for Board of Ed?
Yes, and if there's any comments that Philip, or Mary Ann, or other members of the Board of Education want to make, they can. But I understand there was an outstanding presentation that you gave a few minutes ago, Dr. O'Reilly. So if there's any questions? I know the Board of Education worked very hard on your budget, I want to thank the members for all your work, and for, I know that it's not easy to come in at flat, zero funding, but hopefully, it will be okay. And hopefully, I know, and I've always said this to Mary Ann, your chairman, as well as to Dr. O'Reilly, during the course of the year, keep us surprised, and if things come up that are unexpected, I think it's something as a community, we always address and do our best to meet the needs of our students, and we certainly value education. So I'll open it up to the Board for questions for the Board of Education. I will also say Michael is at a school meeting, he said there was a meeting he had to attend for his child, so he can't be here tonight. Yes?
Page 137, I just wanted to point out for the Board of Ed, while they're here, this does come, it does show the capital improvement plan, not necessarily as they've requested it, but as it's been interpreted by the First Select Woman. So, but we did put in on page 230, or 137, for the 230,000, $230,000 for the replacement of windows and frames for brownstone. And then each of those, if you look at that page, they go out with the various items that the Board has put in, and their additional thoughts, and it goes on actually to page 138 as well. Some are system-wide, some are actually by school. So I just wanted to point those two pages out related to capital.
So Tom, within the schools, then, there's $50,000 for technology upgrades, correct?
Nope.
No.
I think maybe you're looking at last year's, maybe?
Maybe. You didn't put that in this year?
No.
Okay. That's right. Okay. I was looking at the capital plan from last year.
Correct. Unfortunately, to make the windows work, we had removed the, the 50,000 a year that we put in for technology.
Any comments on that, or any, any additional things that you want to warn us about, or tell us? We had an outstanding tour of all the buildings, other than the high school campus. I learned a lot, and saw firsthand the needs that the schools have. And one of the things that I had commented toward the end of the tour that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education had was that we may need to join with some Selectmen. I know that you have a Buildings and Grounds Committee, and it might be valuable to have the liaisons from the Board of Selectmen, so that we can get a better understanding of the needs that you have. What do you think, Mary Ann?
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say just a couple of things. First of all, I-
Would, would you mind terribly using a mic?
No, no.
You, you can even stand there if you want, wherever you're comfortable, as long as we can hear you, Mary Ann. Because not everybody can be here, so if they want to watch it.
Oh, goodie.
Thank you.
That's fine. So, a couple of things. Every few years, we've invited the Board of Selectmen to come and tour the schools to see some of the concerns that we, as a Board, have that we can't keep up on with our budget, with our operating budget. This year, I was very pleased to see the turnout that we had, and I think we engaged in some really productive and lively discussion as we were touring the buildings. We talked about some of the pros and cons of having five buildings to, to keep up. And so, you know, one of the things that the Board is committed to is looking at a long-range plan of how we're going to deal with the upcoming budget cuts that we know are coming down from the state. So we are not pretending like this is not a real issue. However, there are some things that do concern me as the chairman, and the Board as a whole, and some of those things are outlined in Dr. O'Reilly's presentation. But one in particular, I think, that I mention every year, is that we invested a great deal of time, money, and training in technology. Technology is only as good as what you keep up on. So having smart boards in every classroom, that's not enough anymore. Giving kids a Chromebook and not teaching both them and the teachers how to make the best use of that tool is really a waste. So taking out money for technology every year, year after year, really hurts us. I, it's such a, it's such a dilemma, because we need the, the training and the, the dollars towards new and upgraded technology, but we need buildings to be sound and safe. And so we are always trying to balance that. Their, getting to a zero budget this year was not insignificant. Dr. O'Reilly spent an immense amount of time and energy looking at where he could cut with the least impact to our learning and, and our priorities for our education within our district. As a result, we really don't have any wiggle room, and as he talked about, we're facing, potentially looking at additional cuts beyond what was outlined. So when we say we're at rock bottom, I kid you not, we are at rock bottom. There's no room. If we have further cuts, I, I don't really know where that's going to come from, other than sacrificing our class sizes and the quality of our education. So, next year scares me, I'll be honest with you. I, I'm concerned about where the state is going in terms of funding, so that's why we are, as a Board, wanting to look at what are our options. And it's not just one thing, it's not just, hey, we've got to look at closing a school, it's everything, we have to look at everything. But I think for now, I always say, every year, if, if things get bad, we are going to have to come back, and we're going to have to ask for more. Special ed has been extremely volatile this year, and so I have some real concerns around whether or not we're going to be able to stay in budget on that. So that's just a, a, something I want to put out there, not for us mismanaging, but because we keep having new, new students moving into the town, and new special needs being identified within our, our current population. So I guess what I would say is, thank you to my fellow Board members for all of the work and commitment into putting together this budget, but I, I really, really hope that the town can get behind it, I hope the Selectmen can get behind it, and I hope we can all communicate that there, there really isn't anywhere to go but sacrificing quality of learning.
I do think too, Mary Ann, and to others in the audience, I think it's important to certainly convey these comments about education to our elected representatives. And Kristi Carpino has been very diligent in trying to help us, and she is very open to hearing from you, either in writing or a telephone call. I mean, an $800,000 reduction, from what the Governor had told us we would get in February of 2017, which we put in our budget, and we worked with the Board of Education on, till this February, 2018, that reduction is very difficult, if not impossible. I, I don't see how the schools could absorb that kind of a cut. Now, in bigger communities, it's a little bit different. In our community, our budget for education and our budget for general government is very close to what we need. We don't over-budget for things. And that is why it's very difficult for us to cope with this kind of a loss that is announced in November, and then reduced a little bit later in that same month by the Governor, to a budget that we approved and worked on the previous May. I mean, you voted, the town voted on the budget in May of 2017, but we didn't know what the state was going to give us until late November. And as Mary Ann pointed out, that can still be reduced. When I spoke with Kristi yesterday, she said there is still a deficit that they are coping with, and she does not know, she cannot predict what the entire body will do. But it, if any year you need to speak with her, I think it's this year. And as I said, she values input, and I would highly recommend that you do your best to email, letter write, or telephone her. She does a very good job of representing us.
Thank you. I, I think there's only one other thing that I wanted to point out, which is something that I mentioned on Saturday. The Board of Ed has worked very hard in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen to become more of a team, as opposed to, I think, it, you know, years ago, it was us against them. And I don't, I don't think that's been the case in the past several years, and I appreciate that, because it's a single budget that's presented to the town, we all live here, we all pay taxes, it affects us all. But I think working together, having a better understanding, having more interaction between the two Boards, has been very helpful, and, and I, I, so I appreciate that, and I, I look forward to having it continue, so.
Thank you. We thank you for your leadership. It's been a few years. You've been our chairwoman.
Just a few, just a few, just a few. Any questions for me? Yes.
Angela?
I was just curious if we had any statistics around the number of special needs children in our community as opposed to children who don't need special needs, as well as what those cost differentiate, differentials are for special needs child versus that, and if there's any federal or state government funds or grants that we go after to help take the special needs children, which you said that number was getting escalated.
I, I can't speak tonight to the exact number. I, we could, that act, that number probably is on the state education website. I, I say, I believe that we are well within the state average, perhaps a little bit below the state average, in our cost per pupil for special education students, or our special education budget. I'm, I'm pretty confident, actually, to say that, that we're below what other districts pay. But as I indicated earlier in my presentation, presentation, it appears that all of our districts are experiencing such an increase in students with, with more severe needs, and of course, we're responsible for those. So I could get that information in for a future meeting as a comparative. I, I think it's relatively easy to find.
So, so, I'm just going to, so being lower in our expenditures means that we are being more creative in our approach to special need students, not that you didn't say that, but I'm going to say it again, and that we have worked very hard within the special ed department to bring services in, so that we can keep our students in district, but still provide them with the appropriate services that they require. That's what we need to continue to look at, because I don't think that it's realistic to expect that we're going to have less special need students. I think we're going to have more complicated special need students. And I think what our job as a smaller district is to figure out how we can bring in services into district, so that we can provide services for our students in district, as opposed to having to take, send them out to a private entity where we're going to pay premium dollars, and we're also going to pay for transportation, and they're also going to be shipped out to who knows where in Connecticut, which is a lot less, you know, preferable for us in terms of having them here, near their homes. Yeah.
One other thing, she referenced what, what we are exploring. Currently, we have a secondary program at the high school for students with more severe needs. It's an in-house program, and really is saving a great deal of money, and providing an outstanding education to our students. We want to replicate that at the elementary level, and so we're looking at, at creating a similar-type program. And then we would be setting up collaboratives, as Susan spoke about with Cromwell, with the equipment. We'd like to enter in collaboratives with some of our, our districts. Now, right now, we have a relationship with East Hampton, because they have a particular program, and one, and we have a student who meets that, the needs of that program, or whose needs can be met by that program. That's, that's great, because it is a cost savings, to enter in that type of collaborative. We are looking at a collaborative with a area clinic, a Hartford-area clinic, where we would be a satellite. The Board of Ed doesn't even know this yet, because there's nothing, you know, we're just exploring this. But those are some of the things we try to do to reduce the, the cost for special education, why, why provide, providing outstanding programming. I also wanted to go back to your original question about technology. So the town has invested a great deal of money in the last four years in, in our technology for phasing out our desktop computers and our computer labs, and phasing in the one-to-one technology of a 21st-century classroom. That technology, as, as- for phasing out our desktop computers and our computer labs and phasing in the one-to-one technology of a 21st century classroom. That technology, as, as all of us knows, that technology comes in and, and is replaced or has to be replaced relatively short, in, in a short period of time. Now, um, we're going to, we're going to get a life out of these computers that, that every one of our students from grades five through 12 have. But we also have to pay attention that there has to be a replacement cycle. And that $50,000 that was in our budget helped us a great deal with that replacement cycle. So, that's the real, um, effect of that. And we understand why we're doing it. The other thing that we've done in the past is we've always, we've gone to the Gildersleeve Willer Fund, which is a fund that gives us, um, anywhere between 50 and 80,000, $75,000 every single year for special grant projects. And in the past, they've given, they helped us with our technology initiative. Well, I can't go back to get more money for technology because this year they helped us with our new math program. Uh, they, they just gave us, oh, in, in excess of $80,000 for the, that new math program that I spoke to you about, both K-5 and then the middle school math program. So, we are looking at alternative funding sources. We're, we're really trying to work hard to be creative so that we can still advance, uh, our curriculum and teaching and learning.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Um, for the, when the, um, top, the laptop, whatever they're using, are recycled or re, or replaced? What happens to the old ones?
So, some of them are shipped back, right? And...
We have a lea, is it a lease?
A lease program. Oh, okay. So, they just, it's like return and replace?
I, if, I, I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I, I believe that, that the lease allows us to purchase it at the end of the cycle for a very small amount of money. I, you know, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but, uh, I'm pretty sure that, that allows us to do that.
I was just curious, it's like, once you get them, you own them. And if there's a way to make some money on the backend somehow, when you get new ones, you can, like, sell them out to the community or something like that?
Tom's a big fan of selling things after the fact, so he's probably going to want to speak to that.
So, we, we purchased, uh, the Chromebooks, that was actually, that was an acquisition. But it did have a three-year, uh, all-in warranty on it. And those, those were, that was a straight-out buyout from a company called Insight. Uh, and that was, on the, on the rollout we did. So, that, and they did have a, um, a, a warranty on it. And then, once that matter is done, normally what we do is we do, uh, utilize a website called GovDeals. And, uh, they get advertised on that website. Um, we just put an ad in the paper letting us know when, uh, we're doing that. And then, they are available to the public, um, for acquisition. And, and, and we do, uh, a decent, uh, we do, we get a decent return on most of those investments. And, and, and most of the time, that money will go directly back into the capital fund.
You can check on our website, Kerry. There is a section, I think, Tom, it's on the front page, and it says GovDeals.
It is something currently up, so...
But periodically, that's where we put, um, surplus equipment that we're not going to be utilizing anymore. And it is open to the public. You register, and then you bid, and then after a period of time, as you're probably aware of these sites, how they work, then you're awarded the, uh, the, the sale. And then you come into Tom's office and purchase. So, it is a pretty active program. And, uh, I think it works ver, very well, very well. Govdeals.com. Any other questions from the audience? I'll allow questions of, or comments? Angela?
Is the town still using Reddick Earth for its state reporting? Or which, uh, no, using Cowers School?
No, we don't use Cowers School. Aspen.
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 Probably one of five or six districts in the state.
Yeah. Why, why are they using Cowers School as a representative state?
Cost. We believe that Aspen will do an equal job at a far, um, lesser rate.
Budget cuts.
We looked, well, we really looked carefully. Right? When we became, when I became superintendent, there was a lot of concern about Aspen at the time. But we really didn't know what capacity it had. We now better understand its capacity. We now have, um, a data manager, somebody who can, who understands and trains and helps people use that program to the extent it was created.
You know, after you exist, uh, upload their data to the state, or...
Yes. Everything, everything is interoperable with the state, with special education plans, with 504 plans. All of that, we're advancing with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No questions from the board? No questions?
Not at this point. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly.
This is a word that would be all set now, tonight. All right, I'm going to go.
You're welcome to stay, but if you have other appointments, thank you.
So, uh, page 57. This is, uh, page 57 is the Public Works Director Budget. This is made up of two personnel, the director and, um, the assistant. There was a reduction as there was an expected retirement of Mr. Kelsey. And, uh, I believe he is retiring. And, uh, you know, we'll need to, as we work through this, need to make sure that's an accurate number. Susan will, uh, review that during the upcoming, uh, weeks here for deliberation and determine if an adjustment needs to be made there or not in this budget. 59 is the Highway Division.
I just wanted to highlight, Tom, since we don't always talk about accomplishments. Um, there's been a lot of work done by the Public Works Office. And, um, if we just highlight, they prepared the contract documents for the Spring Street Reconstruction Project, which includes water and sewer infrastructure improvements. Prepared the contract documents for the $1 million sidewalk project, was done in the Public Works Director's office. Prepared and issued the bids, we anticipate, um, for the Spring Reconstruction Project, as well as the sidewalk project. Replaced the sidewalks, as I pointed out in my presentation earlier, if you were here. The sidewalks adjacent to town-owned buildings, which is Brownstone School, Senior Center, Town Hall, and Library. Also made Portland Reservoir repairs. It's a requirement that we, uh, take a look at that dam and make improvements. That was done. Um, Public Works Department also replaced the transfer station scale that had aged out and needed replacement, which was accomplished. We also, um, through the Public Works Office, replaced the generators at the Co-Avenue Pump Station, as well as Department of Public Works Garage. Those generators have come in very handy this year with the power loss that we've had. And that was a job well done. As well as, uh, the last item that's mentioned here, and there's many more items, but these are the ones that are highlighted, performed safety and code improvements at the water and sewer facilities, which, as I mentioned earlier, had been outlined in the tie-in bond report that was done by the MDC. So, it's quite a bit of work in one year. Thank you, Tom.
On page 59 is the Highway Division. Uh, the Highway Division completed the culvert repair of Cox Road. They completed the annual chip seal program. They screened chip zone. They cleaned and regraded sand, the sand pit. They made curb repairs. They completed the curbing and drainage improvements on Thompson Hill Road. Continued roadside mowing, tree trimming, cutting throughout the town. Replaced various guardrails, completed paving and drainage improvements on Great Hope on Road. Cleaned and installed storm drains as needed. Cleared and regraded the end of Middlesex Avenue. Performed, uh, and revised the inlet and installed on Freestone and High Street intersections. Uh, this budget, uh, is showing a decrease. Uh, one of the people has, uh, resigned. And I think that position was reset at the, uh, early, um, the lower step. And also, it went when the highway supervisor had, um, resigned. There was a halftime potential position in last year's budget for, uh, for a, uh, regular staff person. Uh, that position had not been filled. And therefore, um, that's showing the decrease. As you go through the line items, we've tried to do our best to remain similar in the budget levels. Um, and so, the overall budget there is a global decrease of 5.47. Page 61 is our Vehicle Maintenance Division. This is made up of two individuals. Um, they obviously handle the ongoing maintenance of all our vehicles and equipment and, uh, and do, and do a fine job at maintaining them with limited resources. Um, the, uh, assumingly, uh, this is trying to keep the budget within line. There's only a, a $250 increase here. There's an increase in, uh, payroll. And, um, the budget by the department head was, uh, there was a request, I believe, for an extra 10,000 or 15,000 in equipment repairs. But, uh, we actually lowered that number a little bit in, uh, putting the budget together in hopes that, um, some of the new equipment that we acquired, uh, through the lease program would help mitigate some of that, um, some of those repairs that may be, um, a thought that, uh, I guess is wishful, but we'll, we'll give that a shot there. Uh, page 63 is our, is our engineering budget. This budget, you know, goes up and down based on activity. And, and is again, is a budget that we've left relatively the same budget. As you can see, it's gone up. We've, we've, we've spent, uh, 42,016, which was quite close. Last year, uh, we were, we were quite high. There was a specific, um, uh, storm drainage situations and, um, and various permitting by deep that was required that caused us to go up quite a bit in 17. Hopefully, not all of those will be required. Um, so, this budget is a moving budget and one that we do always have to continue to monitor. Um, at some point, it may be something we want to try to increase. But, uh, right now, we're going to try to mitigate it and, and keep it as flat as we can. Um, some of the items are covered, um, you know, with the bigger projects, they're in their own fund. But, uh, these items here are other types of, of, of projects that are coming along for us. Page 65 is our Street Lighting Budget. Um, we have, uh, you know, there has been an expected increase in, in electricity, but we had some savings with the LED lighting. So, we've left that flat in a, in, in kind of an assumption that the, uh, the savings that we're going to reap on the LED will be offset by the increases in distribution, um, that, that we're expecting. Page 67 is our Ground Maintenance Division. This, this division is a consolidated division with the town and Board of Ed and the landscape, approximately 90 acres of town, uh, land and wall fields. Um, this year, they purchased a Ford F-550 dump truck and a mid-sized utility tractor. Um, they assisted with the construction of Route 17, uh, complex as the, uh, the supervisor was set on that board as a liaison. And they completed several improvements on Middlesex Avenue Fields. Um, this, uh, budget here is at a 0.88. It's pretty much has the current salary increases based on union contracts. And more or less, the remainder of the budget has stayed flat. Page 69 is our Town Buildings Maintenance. The Town Building Maintenance has continued to, they replaced the windows as needed at Town Hall. They've painted interior and exterior various, uh, town buildings. Um, and they can, the, uh, condensers were replaced at the library. The generator was installed at the town garage. And they completed lead paint removal projects at the Town Hall entrance, repainted the porch, replaced furnaces at the Highway Garage in Company 1. Um, this, uh, project here has two, uh, or three men in it, has a lead man and two other men, uh, that, uh, that run, work in this department. Um, it maintains majority of the service contracts for the whole, uh, town, all the town buildings. And, um, it does have all centralized telephone and internet charges for all, all town departments and all cell phone usage, um, except for the amounts that are charged to emergency management, um, and, and animal control. And, uh, the, their commodities here, um, we do, uh, the, there was a little bit of an increase in building supplies. It just, it just becomes very, very difficult to try to, uh, maintain building supplies at an $11,000 number with all the aged buildings and all the supplies that are needed, as well as the continual costs on all those type of, uh, repairs and upgrades. So, that budget is at a 1.88% overall budget increase. Page 71 is our Snow Removal Budget. Uh, this is another, uh, item that's, is difficult to track, um, as it all based on the need and, and of the storms that are, that are there. Um, sometimes you come close in overtime, sometimes you're nowhere near it. Sometimes you're close on road materials. Sometimes we have some overage and storage. So, that number is, uh, uh, basically the same. I increase based on the union contract and just general, uh, estimate of a 2%, 2% increase there on overtime, as it just seems that, you know, obviously, the, as time goes on, um, we just go up. So, therefore, overtime's going to go up. So, it just needed to, we had not moved on the overtime number in, in years. So, uh, just moved it up slightly to two, by $2,000. Um...
Hey, Tom, how are we, just curious, how are we doing with this winter?
We are, uh, doing, we're, we're, we're over quite a bit on payroll. And we're doing reasonably well on sand and salt, but, uh, on the, uh, on the actual, uh, payroll, I believe we're... This is as of the last meeting we had. So, we were at, uh, expense as of, this was as of March 19th, was $72,000 for overtime. And we were at, uh, with encumbrances, we were at about $20,000, uh, spent, uh, with encumbrances, 16 expended and 13,000 encumbered for road materials. So, at that time, we were net about $1,000. Obviously, it's gotten worse since then.
Tom, is there going to be any more snow this season?
Uh, abracadabra, no more snow. No more snow. Okay. I think, believe that's the only pieces of the general fund that we hadn't touched upon last time, uh, except for the, uh, transfers, um, that we'll touch upon now. So, continuing with the general fund items, we'll come back to water and sewer, but we'll continue with the general fund. So, on page 127, the, uh, this is the Resource Recovery Facility. We have estimated, uh, revenues and expenses here. A few things that we, we, we probably do need, uh, to, to do, we, at some point in the near future, we probably do need to revisit our fee structure and fees here. We have not raised fees in quite a while. We should probably go up on the permitting fees, as well as the various fees for usage, um, as well. There appears to be a potential that, um, we, there may be no revenue coming in for single stream any longer as, um, as contracts continue to evolve and that market continues to get, um, cut. And it does not, uh, do well. So, um, that's a possibility where we estimated a $10,000 revenue that may not come in. We will have to, uh, see it as, as time goes on there. But in the ex, in this budget is made up of two personnel. And then, there's overtime in this budget. They have their medical insurance, as well as their, uh, pension contributions, uh, service contracts. It is, is made up of the service contracts for that facility, as well as when we do, um, the grinding of, of, um, the various materials that come in for, uh, like, uh, storm and brush. Yes, thank you. Uh, so, brush draining.
While you're mentioning brush, I had talked with Rick earlier today. And many, many, many people have asked if we're doing brush pickup this year. Um, we typically do brush pickup in the even years, no, the odd, excuse me, the odd years only. However, there is a lot of storm damage that has occurred this year. So, I told many of... However, there is a lot of storm damage that has occurred this year, so I told many of the residents I would mention it to the selectmen and I know that we have a lot of cleanup from these storms and it's not only brush, it's curbing, it's the lawns, it's the roads, the equipment, what else, Rick?
Pretty much anything that has to do with roads and equipment is probably worse this year, as you've all seen, than probably in the past ten years. We are already behind the eighth wall and moving late, most assured being a sweeping and roadside cleanup and all those things that happen on roads particularly, so to add on, as much as I understand, another brush pickup in the middle of it will most assuredly, and we're down to man in the highway department and have been since October, that's budgeted and not replaced. If you choose to do an annual brush pickup, what's going to happen is we'll have to advertise it. And right now, we're in the middle of cleaning the roads right now with, with the limbs and stuff that have fallen within the right of bounds. And if you go to advertise a brush pickup and give people some notice, we will almost definitely push ourselves into the time when we are trying to get things cleaned up, so it will make things very difficult and there will be, there'll be many complaints on not getting the brush pickup, but I can assure you, there will be many complaints on how come my lawn is not picked, how come my street is not swept, how come our curbing is still lining up the road, so they can't undertake any of that, so it's a hard decision for you, but my suggestion would be not to have an annual brush pickup.
Did they have a five, at least in the four inch? A lot of people say a lot of them are bigger than four inches.
Again, you can bring those in the transfers. You either have to do a brush pickup or you don't, it can't be happened. So, so again, what I'm trying to say to you is, is if you go there, that's fine, but get ready because we will be very much behind on our normal roadside cleanup.
What is your question again?
Usually nothing over four inches, other than that, it's over four inches goes to both the, the eight or whatever.
No, 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 that hasn't been that way for some time. We can bring, the grinds now, we don't burn, so we don't have to have the state in there in spec, so you can bring pretty much, pretty much any size to the transfer. It's separate from what we're discussing here about roadside picking up.
What we have been doing is some storm cleanup. I mean, I'm sure a lot of you walk around town and I see and ride around, there's a lot of brush on the side of the road. Public Works is picking up what they can, but it's, it's out there and it's going to be there, so I wanted to bring it up. I don't know that you need to decide tonight, but I think you should give some consideration. It's a big service and as Rick pointed out, maybe he won't be getting the complaints, but I'll get them.
If it was changed, if we did it this year, why don't we just go to every even year instead of every odd year, so you just don't do it next year? Go to even years until ten years from now when we have another horrible winter and we have to change about?
In other words, not do it next year.
Yes, I indicated, this year is an exceptional year for all the other things associated with that, which again, means that this year, even if you don't do brush pickup, we're going to be late with all the other roadside pickups such as road sweeping, such as lawn repair, such as curbing pickups, such as all of them. It would be nice and I don't, it's just the long year to try to do that. It's okay, again, just be prepared because there will be many complaints.
I know we don't want to remind, we'll retire something, contact.
Here you go.
All right, let's move on. Thank you. All right, so going through here, we continue on, we have, what the department's doing is a very good job of keeping the expenditures within, in line as much as they can and the permits setups have been in place. So global point nine-six increase is there in expenses. Again, they, we, we do need to revisit and, and Rick and, and the, the public works department will review, will review those, the fee structure and, and we'll, we'll look into that. But that's the resource recovery facility. On page one thirty, we have our building.
Tom, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the facility use permits, it goes up significantly? I'm just trying to understand where.
Yeah, that was, that was assuming that there was an, going to be an anticipated increase in the.
Okay, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to verify.
Correct.
Do, do we know where we ended up for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that would, is there any data that shows that there was an increase this past fiscal year?
We, we didn't increase, we didn't increase the fee.
No, no, it's numbers, more people get the.
We don't have a complete year, we continue, you know, the year rolls. I do not have oh-nine with me, no, sorry, I don't have that. Page one thirty is the, but I mean, I don't have it with me, but I will say generally the permitting fee, as you can see, it, it's quite consistent, so without a fee increase, you're not going to get to the thirty-four, thirty-three, five. But, you know, that's, that is anticipating an increase. The, the building maintenance fund is a fund that we have set aside, amount of money between the two departments of town and board and we try to hit some of the items that we're talking about, these, the items that are, these maintenance type items that are, that are large. The board of ed, as you can see, had, at times, at the end of the year, will transfer money into that fund as, as they do have an capability, if, if you all approve, usually this type of transfer, the board, selectmen will approve a transfer generally in May of their monies that generally is around a hundred thousand dollar amount, that if they do have it available, they'll transfer into this fund. It allows it to carry over to try to accomplish items and as you can see, in sixteen and seventeen, they spent a, a good amount of money to try to get some of those major projects that we have not possibly funded in capital done and, and that's a, kudos to the board of ed on utilization of those funds appropriately. But that's, we're, we're leaving that in the flat for this year and, and as, as we know, the budget issues are, are abound. Shooting back to one twenty-two, this is the town aid road fund. We're hearing rumblings that the second half of town aid road, which was, it's, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, may not come and then county road for seven, for, for this fiscal year may be eliminated. That's very troubling if that is to occur. That is the way you, the, this town maintains its roads and the quality level that they are maintained, this is the funds that are used to chip seal and to improve any of the curbing and, and any of those items that, that need to be improved, those, these are funds that are provided by the state and it would be, it would be tough situation to lose that. That would be something that, you know, in the future, we would need to have to come up with a plan in the town to come up with our own money if those funds are cut and that's, that's a two hundred and forty thousand dollar a year grant.
If you've been listening or watching or reading, there's a lot of talk about this special transportation fund and there's a lack of action, at least at this point, by the legislature to address the dollars that are needed and specifically, town aid road would not be funded. So we may not get the second half of this year's allocation and none of next year. And when the commissioner came and he spoke to the council of governments, he sent his second in command to talk with us, he said if that doesn't happen quickly, if there's not action taken for this special transportation fund, it's not going to happen. So again, as I asked you before, call Christie and speak with her. I asked her about this yesterday and she said there still had been no action taken. I don't even know if the state's going to be doing some of their routine road improvements that they do over the summer. Well, for us, it's tar, think of the, you know, that's why they named it town aid road. It's an old program, it's been around a long time, right, Rick? And we depend on this money to do local roads and it's a return of your tax money, it's not a gift, it's a return of the money that you already give to the state, just like education cost sharing, it's a return of the money that you've given to the state and instead of giving it to Portland, you're giving it to other cities, is what's happened to a lot of the money. If you want any more comments from now, make them. I'm not happy, it's bad and you have to fight for what is yours, so I encourage you all to make sure you do. Thank you, Tom.
So those are the departments that affect the general fund. The other two departments that we have here are the water and sewer operations. The, the department requests, the, as we, we put out the, the capital requests to y'all, I believe they were, they were much, much higher than what was budgeted in, in Susan's proposal here, so that, just want to point that out initially, there was a, one hundred and twenty-five thousand was put into these budgets, I believe it was much, much higher than that, was requested by the department head and, and the departments as recommended based upon the tie-in bond study. So the sewer department had a request on expenditures, this is page one, one thirteen to one fifteen, of two point four-three percent. The, there was salary increases based on the union contract stipulations. There was the twenty thousand dollar increase in service contracts and that was the monies that we spent in seventeen for, we had sent out a contract for review to go through and, and flush and, and fix some of the, flush the sewer pipes and there was supposed to be a three-year to four-year continuum of that program. We happened to forget to put that in in eighteen or it came in in the same time, so that's, in nineteen, that is the twenty thousand dollars that's there, is, is, is hopefully the continuum of that and the need to continue that, to go through and to flush as well as at times the, the, they had to saw through some of the roots that have gone into the system. Otherwise, there's potential for backup into homes, so that was something that, the program that the public works department and the sewer department put install, installed and likely, likely try to continue this year as well as in nineteen. Going through electricity continues to be a cumbersome item in this, in this department. Some of the equipment is aged as, as the facility gets older, sometimes based on requirements, there's been additional equipment that's been required to be put in, so those are continual items as well as the distribution costs from ever source continues to go up. So all those show an increase in electricity cost. The note is based on the note schedules and, and that pretty much makes up the sewer expenses. The concern in the sewer department is that on the revenue side, if you look on page one thirteen, in sixteen, in seventeen, the full implementation of rates were in the sixteen, seventeen numbers and you get to like about a million dollars of revenue brought in. That needs to be about one point one million dollars to make the fund balance, so that, based on one hundred percent expenditures. So there really, you know, there, there needs to be a review to, by the board to determine if there can be somewhere between a five to ten percent rate increase in, in this department and likely in water and sewer to get you closer to that level of where you need to be, in this instance, probably closer to a ten on the sewer as, as it has been hard to get the revenue up. Their, their, they bring your police is expected to bring some revenues, but not to the level of balancing you out here. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention, is that is a concern in the budget and something that will, should, should, should be looked at. The one sixteen in one through one eighteen is your water department budget, again, coming in at one point eight-seven increase, very reasonable increase there, majority is five thousand of that is related to increase in water as, that's tough, water's a tough one to call, is sixteen and seventeen, we did around four seventy-seven and in seventeen, we did about six oh-nine from MDC, mostly because of the, the drought, water drought. So that is concerning and when you don't have water to pull from the well, you have to buy it directly from MDC. MDC did go up with another, they've continually gone up with rate increases, there's been a rate increase as well for the next cycle, so we're, you know, hoping that we can stay close to the six fifteen number with more rainfall and not having a drought. If the drought persists, then there is a concern in that number, obviously. Salary is going up based on contractual. More or less, that is the increases in the water. Again, capital is at that one twenty-five, hundred twenty-five thousand dollar level, not at the level requested by the department. The, this fund, as expected, the increase, if you see, look on page one sixteen, meter sales are at nine sixteen, to in theory make the budget work, you need a million one one nine. Therefore, again, the thought of a potential increase in rates to get to that next level. So there, a couple of items I just wanted to bring to your attention there for those, for those areas and.
Can I have a question on the water?
Sure.
The, most of the water is purchased by MDC and then there are some wells that we own in town, we use? Is that, is that what you were saying?
Rick, can you answer that question?
Two thirds, two thirds of our water is purchased from the MDC, a third of our water is purchased from the Laskinburg Turf, like well, it's the only well we have. If I could add, as you, the board, if you choose to increase rates, hopefully you will, in mind that, again, as Tom has indicated, tie-in bond report identifies approximately a million dollars a year in each water, each, the water and sewer budgets that should be in there for infrastructure repairs, replacements, improvements, it's a good report, you should, if you get a chance to look at it. So the rates and expenditures that we're projecting are based on not a million dollars a year in capital improvements, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So it gives you a little bit of a false sense of security, so as you contemplate, if you contemplate rate increases, please, Jim is a liaison now at water, so we had a discussion the other night on this, you need, you really need to begin to put some money into your water and sewer systems, which isn't a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's more like a million a year for the next fifteen years, based on what it costs, so the rates would need to be increased more than probably five percent, but again, there's good numbers to support that.
Correct, and I, as I stated, that my estimates are five to ten percent is utilizing a hundred and twenty-five thousand capital, not a million. If you use a million, definitely rates would be a higher percentage than that.
A million dollars cash?
A million dollars of capital in the current year, if you were to pay a million dollars.
Two thousand three hundred customers, you just can't do it. I, I don't know how you do it.
In fairness, in fairness, if I could, in fairness, to meet our requirements for the state department of public health, as you have to do that with the various other state departments and other, should you decide not to improve your infrastructure, you will not be able to meet the permit requirements of the state department of public health and/or the, that's, that's good.
Well, one of the.
So, excuse me, if I could, I don't have the answers and I realize it's a tremendous burden on who uses, but the options are not, not doing, the options are, you really don't have much choice if you're going to meet your state permit department, that's for sure. That's for sure.
So you didn't know about this years ago, but just all of a sudden?
If I could, I've been suggesting this to the boards for probably the last fifteen years, that you need to do these things. I don't, I don't necessarily make those decisions. And yes, I have that worked for a very long time. Yes.
Especially down by my neighborhood, every year.
Every neighborhood.
Four, five breaks.
Absolutely. And there'll be more.
What we do have, Michael, is a relatively new report that tie-in bond engineering wrote. And it was when Carl Chudzik was on the board, he spearheaded a committee, a water and sewer committee. And one of the things that we looked at was the potential of either becoming a member of the Metropolitan District Commission or some other capacity having them as our partner. So in anticipation of that, they paid for a fifty thousand dollar study of the water and sewer. And that report was reviewed by the boards. And when we met with them, one of the things that's difficult with a entity the size of Metropolitan District Commission is they charge for sewer in the cities that are pretty much fully sewered, an ad valorem type tax. And that means everybody, regardless of whether they have sewer or not, gets charged a tax. And that is the way they charge for sewer. And in order to become a member, you have to be utilizing not only their water, but also their sewer as a full member. So that kind of made it difficult for us to make that decision at that point. And we decided at that point, we would do some of the, the major safety improvements that have been done. And then we're, we're doing a water main replacement this season, as we talked about earlier on Spring Street. But as far as the needed improvements, they're stated, they're analyzed, they're documented. So yes, we know them. But in terms of the management of water and sewer, it's a serious question that I think a subcommittee of this group will be addressing. Many towns our size do not run their own water and sewer programs. We have done that for many decades. And it's not an easy thing to do because of the numbers of customers we have and because a lot of people in Portland do not use water, have no intention of being water customers, have no intention of being sewer customers. So is there sixteen, how many sewer customers?
Possibly twenty-five hundred water customers, approximately seventeen hundred sewer.
Seventeen sewer customers.
About fifty percent of the towns certified on the water and probably the other four or five. And it does make it very difficult, places that are an awesome burden on those few.
And the, and the other element there, and it's something that the subcommittee needs to address, as Rick has pointed out. But what's important to point out is as we're trying to expand the economic development within the town, one of the things that's looked at is do you have water and sewer? And yes, we're very grateful that we have that infrastructure in our town. But the improvements to it are a burden, as, as Rick pointed out. And when you increase rates exorbitantly that may be necessitated by the numbers, it almost becomes, I mean, this is my opinion, it almost becomes impossible to begin to attract the businesses that you need as well as the customers. I mean, I'm a water and a sewer customer. And many people in the room are, many people in the room are not. And it makes it challenging. I know, I think Cromwell is fully sewored now for, as an example. And I think they're fully watered, so to speak. But when you have this kind of bifurcation of the town where half, less than half the town is water and far less than that is sewored. And to, to extend it may not be necessary because there's a lot of good soils in Portland for sewer and there's a lot of good water in town. One thing that Rick has recommended, and I hope that this committee, that I know Jim will probably be spearheading along with two other members, is the need, if we're going to continue the way we are, to get a water source that we don't have to pay six hundred thousand dollars a year for. I mean, the cost of the water at six hundred thousand dollars takes a big chunk out of the budget for water. And what you're paying for is MDC rates. And if you were a customer in another town and you were paying that rate, you would get the service as well from MDC, but we don't. So you're not only paying for the, the raw water, so to speak, but also some of the cost associated with the running of MDC. We don't get that extra charge that Glastonbury fought and won. But Glastonbury is a town where each customer is a customer, not of the town of Glastonbury, but they're a customer of Metropolitan District Commission. In Portland, you're a customer, if you're a water customer, you're a customer of the town of Portland. And we have one meter that we pay to the MDC. So that's why we didn't get involved with that fight. I don't know if you were watching that lawsuit. But the individuals in Glastonbury were paying, being asked to pay a large fee to pay for work that was not being done in their town. They're not members of MDC. They were paying for work that was being done in some of the cities and they won. They're not expected to pay that extra surcharge. But that's a little bit of a mini course in water and sewer. There are other ways and we need to explore it and how we proceed. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the, as, as we had noted, the tie-in bond report came out recently. We've, we have completed and the water and sewer department has worked on some very good safety and safety concerns that were in that report. We working on some of the Spring Street, Rick's been working on the proposal for Spring Street and the related water infrastructure under that street. So hopefully that'll be a real improvement from the High Street down to East Main. And, and then from that standpoint, there, you know, as, as we continue on, we've also from our, the townwide standpoint on the debt, we were looking toward rolling out this ten million dollar project, which was important. And then the next, as you continue on, we do need to try to, the, the water department itself has made revenue, positive revenues the past two years to create where it was in the positive. The sewer continues to run in a deficit and the deficit continues to grow. So there, for the reason to really consider that sewer department increase in rates. As, you know, and then the water, as we know, we need more capital, you need to generate rates. So those are some of the things that are there. And then as well, you know, there are possible grant opportunities and/or debt opportunities. Like you said, I mean, if you were to do a million dollars, you would definitely outlay that. You know, and pay it out of just revenue, it would be something that you would pay over, over a time period. And, and some of those can be financed through some of the state programs that are too or low financing, know some of the rural development notes that are available and/or if there was some type of a bonding issue that could be available. And those all could be discussed with Susan and the, and the department head and the financial advisor when we get to that point of moving forward. But yeah, I just think we, you know, those are the type of items that are, that are in front of you and the challenges in those two departments. But like you said, the, the key is to have a good, clean water for residents and the people coming into our town and good sewer to make sure that the operations is, we follow the guidelines by the state. The next item is our capital plan. And the capital plan is funded four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and five hundred dollars by the town, by the general fund. Ten thousand is for the airline trail and the complete, the complete street consultant there for the ten thousand dollars. The revaluation, we generally put in a larger number. I believe it's normally a forty thousand dollar number. We couldn't make that work. So this year, we're, we're putting in the ten thousand in our consistent plan there. That's, you know, in year four or five, we'll, we'll have to come up with the extra thirty thousand dollars in a year. We're not funding that. So, but we wanted to keep at least the, 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 the thought process in there of flat funding. The computers, we have twenty-one thousand for servers and computers. And that's a townwide amount that's, that we, that we set aside. Helps with all these various issues come about. The highway division is in desperate need of a, of a dump body. There's forty-five thousand dollars set aside for that. The police department has required to change their reporting system. The state is mandating the, the change. They are pretty much telling them the vendor via the state contract with data transferring and that information, there's a ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollar price tag. They have not necessarily guaranteed any type of grant. There's possibility of maybe like a local law enforcement block grant or some type of a JAG grant, but they'll attempt to get any type of grant they can. Captain Malardo will work toward that. But in this instance, we need, we don't know that there is anything necessarily going to be set aside. But we do know there is a requirement for this activity. Then we talked about the brownstone windows for the board of ed, two hundred and thirty thousand. There was a, some amount of money left over. That combined together, hopefully we'll get the project to the end. They would need to be, there is a, state reports to get filed. So there's a consultant that they utilize that does all their work on that. There would be the installer of the windows. There would be a demolition company that may have to take out some of the dirty components of those windows. So that is the general fund component, the LoSIP. They've estimated around a seventy-four thousand dollar amount for LoSIP. Parking rec generally has been given a twenty-five thousand dollar allotment. And the remainder was put into municipal parking lots as we're trying to do our best to get monies into that component to get as many of our municipal lots completed as, as the need continues. So those are the components of the capital plan. And again, for water and sewer, it's just a hundred and twenty-five thousand for each of those and to what's pretty much called a system improvement, which are pretty much any of the things that are within that capital plan that tie-in bond or in or that the department head requires to help improve their facilities. We had submitted to you all in the packet, the requests by all the departments. Those all went to Long Range Capital. Long Range Capital did put out a list of their information that they recommended. That did come out a little bit after, they did the process during our process, but the, the report did come out a little bit after the budget came out. So that was something that we did put in the packet for you all to review. And then if you needed to address any of their concerns or wanted to add or add monies into the budget and make some adjustments, you always could do that. Do you have any questions for Mike Galati, who's the Long Range Capital Commission Chairman? Would you like him to come up and present his findings or?
Sure. Hello. We've been over a two eating period with all the directors and we came up with a list of basically needs, not many wants. As Tom specified, I would give my report. The police reporting system is, the state is mandating a change that all departments have to go through and it's ninety-nine thousand dollars. And this will be coming off state bid and it has to be done by January first. So that needs to be funded. Highway division, we recommended a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk replacements since that seems to be the hot topic in town. I know you're spending a million. I know you changed the plan because I was on the sidewalk committee. But we also talked to you during the year that we were going to try to put money forward through the budgeting process to fix some hotspots in town on Main Street and elsewhere. So you guys were all kind of in agreement at the time to try to do something about that. So I'd like to see you put the hundred thousand dollars to something that you think is a unsafe area town. That's what we thought this would be used for and the million would be used to, to the sidewalk committees. Recommendations would be, obviously had different ideas in the final outcome. The library, ten thousand dollars to replace seating and tables for children's activity area and studies. The library is getting a grant, a good size grant to do the library over. We thought that this ten thousand dollars would finish up the little things that they needed. So the library actually caught up, they're the ones that have been lagging behind for a few years here on any repairs. All the other buildings have seemed to be done. So we thought it'd be feasible to put the ten thousand to help Jan out on her request. Grounds maintenance, fourteen foot enclosed trailer for eight thousand dollars. The cargo van that's being used now is falling apart. It leaks regularly, it's rusting and caught on fire last year. And this blew a turbo on the motor, which we had fixed. So sooner or later, that needs to go. We'd rather sell it while it has some value than none. Building maintenance division, to install a transfer switch for the portable generator for twenty-five thousand dollars. That would be used to hook up electrical transfer switches at both buildings. So the portable generator that town owns, if we lose power for an extended period of time, especially in the winter. So they can heat this building, turn it off, go to the next building and heat that one to keep these buildings up. So we don't have any issues, especially in this building. If we lose a pipe or anything with all those expensive books and electronics, it would become an issue. I do not know why this hasn't been taken care of earlier. It's been requested many times by the public works director. And EverSource's response has been pretty terrible, if you read the paper throughout the state. So I would recommend at least taking care of our own two buildings and putting the money in to get that transfer switch. The FAR department communications equipment for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's changes being made by, on the operational frequencies due to mutual aid partners in Middletown. They're doing a twelve million dollar upgrade for their radios. And Portland will no longer be able to communicate with them or any of the areas in Middletown. So they need to upgrade their radio system in the FAR department.
Do you want to comment on that?
Bob?
Either Tom or Chief.
Yeah, we've made provisions to make some of those changes this year and follow up with changes next year. So we should be good.
You got the money? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
The FAR department applied for a grant to replace tanker six, which is a nineteen eighty-five tanker. And it's been refurbished before and it's about done. They can't even get parts for it anymore. There's two problems. If he gets the grant, which we hope he does, we got to come up with a cost share of twenty-four thousand dollars. If he does not get the grant, his grant consultant recommends a hundred thousand dollars already be earmarked for that piece of apparatus. So when they go out to apply for the grant again, it looks more favorable for the town. So we can get the grant, which should be, the truck would probably be close to five hundred, give or take. So it's like rushing what, what do you want to do? You're going to need the money sooner or later either way. So put the money, it's up to you guys how you want to figure it out. But to save money, you got to spend money.
Yeah, that's our oldest truck in the fleet right now. That's like Rick had mentioned, over a percent of our community. That does not have municipal water supply as quite a.
It's a mess up.
Yeah, right. Safety, safety issues. So this is my second attempt at the grant. We look for, reached out to consulting this year because everyone's really doing that. And without that, it doesn't seem, you don't even seem to make it through the peer review. So we did that and we feel that we have a good opportunity this year. But with that said, as Mike had mentioned, based on history over the past five years, the government is looking for much more from the communities if they're willing to give you one. With that being, their matches are, they want you to contribute a little more towards that funding. Before it was really just your level of one percent at one time. They moved to five percent. Not only is it the five percent now, but they want to see cities and towns start to plan for the replacement of that equipment rather than just have the government fund it as a whole. So we're looking, you know, moving forward. So really the request came from the consultant based on this year's grant for us to fund that now in the event that they come back in the next few months, which usually isn't until September or October that we would hear on a vehicle replacement. If they were to ask us for that funding now, if we had that, to award it to us now. Um, if they were to ask us for that funding now, if we had that, to award it to us now. So that's the reason why I put it in this request this year, to be able to say, yes, we do have that funding, and we can move forward, rather than waiting a whole other year, which could turn into two. So that's where the hundred, which is the total.
And just a note, it's the only tanker you have. It's not like it's, you have three engines, that's the one that's really, actually really important in the, in the business where we have limited water in some areas of town. So, I won't push this as much, but it needs to be done sooner or later. I actually should have two tankers, we've had that discussion, because you cannot rely on other towns anymore, it's like, just volunteers are just going away, it's hard.
Major, major fire this year where the tanker was out of service, because we had lost a critical portion of the pump, which is not replaceable because of the age, so the shaft had to actually be sent out to an engineering firm, which we worked very closely with, to actually repair it and remachina it. And with that said, being in the business, there's no guarantee on that workmanship, because they never know what could happen, they just have to repair it. They do their best, metallurgically, things could change, um, it was tested, but, you know, we're operating now under the assumption that that shaft through the pump will hold. So, you know, we have to rely on our mutual aid when that truck is down, which we did, which is a delay to get here from Middletown, so, yeah, we're at a critical point for the next year or so, to really, to look at that vehicle, see what they're gonna do.
All right, the board of education, track replacement of the high school for sixty grand. Track was installed in two thousand and four, obviously if you've been walking up there recently, it's in bad shape. And we have done much, not much to it over the years, I mean, we've done some ten dollars now repairs a few times, but it's not cutting it. This is, this is one, I'm, I'm telling you, it needs to get done before it costs us a heck of a lot more.
Yeah, that, this is one that, um, we talked about it a little, we have talked about it a little bit, the, right now, there's a, a process that they're looking at, going out for bid to do some repair work on the track, where the actual cracks are coming through. This sixty would be to do, on top of that, a skim coat to seal the track and re-line the track. The idea being that if we do that, um, what's been identified, does is that we'll get six to eight years out of the track as it sits today. If we don't do that, the consultant that we talked to, well, basically that, you know, we met out, we had a site meeting, um, probably what, maybe about a month ago, uh, it's about half that, before it has to be fully replaced, including the base. So, that, that's what this is about, the sixty thousand isn't for a full replacement of the track, is to do an interim sealing step to try to make the track last longer, to give us time to prepare for a full install. Carl, am I representing that?
Yes, I think the number needs to be a little bit higher than that, but just gotta be a little careful on the number as we're requesting additional locations, so that's an open process, so, but, you know, there's somewhere under, under a hundred thousand would be, uh, needed for a, uh, repair type situation, and we give you a seven-year period, and then if there was immediate, uh, somewhere under like, uh, somewhere twenty-five or below, we give you, uh, a one- to two-year repair, um, with, uh, with, with that being said, with the architectural architecture, like, we don't really think about that.
I mean, there's been numerous repairs up there, you can see the difference, and it's only gonna go so far. This track is, it's beyond, I mean, you can stick the finger down that far into the holes, and the new replacement totally is what, four hundred thousand, you say? Three fifty to four hundred thousand, which is not feasible now, we all know. So I would recommend doing something to the track this year. And let them know as soon as they can, so they can land up a contractor, so July one, when school's out, it gets done, and we don't wait again, as we usually do, to the wrong time. Board of education, replacement windows at the brownstone for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. I think this is the last phase of the project. I thought they were gonna do it last year, they did not, so I'm glad it's in the budget for this year, so we can finish that project up board. Uh, the Brownstone School has had a lot of repairs over the years.
Question, do you, do you think, um, I mean, you've talked with them about this, and we talked a little bit about it on the tour that we went on this weekend, are they gonna be able to get this mobilized and done this summer?
I don't know, Paul talked about doing it last year, so, I don't know. Well, he's, it's all timing, I mean, you gotta look them, I mean, before the budget passes, you gotta give them some idea of the month it's gonna be there or not. I mean, obviously, he's gotta get the ball rolling, so July one, when the money's there, and you can get the contractors lined up. You wait too long, you're not gonna get contractors.
Paul seemed to suggest that it's, it can't really happen. It's not realistic to think it can happen this spring, for the summer, because typically when they go out to the contractors at this time, they're gonna say that they're already busy. So I don't know whether, you know, we're planning, obviously, for next year, to be ready to roll come first thing next year, but that, that was the impression I got from what Paul had to say while we were on the tour.
It's all timing, you only got two months to do it. July and August, and they're back to school early now. Uh, board of education, outside repairs, fifty thousand dollars. The tennis courts and various parking lots. Especially, the tennis courts are cracking, Carl went there and again looked today, I said, go up and look at it, there's big cracks, so if we're gonna, let's try to stop a problem before it gets bigger. So seal, I mean, fix the cracks in the tennis courts, hopefully for a minimal cost, before it gets bigger, when we end up like the biz and we have to do a total repair job. And same with the parking lots, they're falling apart at, at all the schools. They're all cracked, they need to be some kind of system, I, they're talking about double quote chip seal, they gotta fill the cracks, some money has to go into them, they're just, you know, it's repairs. Like Rick stated before, block top doesn't last more than fifteen years of lifespan. As I know I got a crack in my driveway, it's fourteen years old, so he's pretty correct on that. Uh, computers for twenty-one thousand for administration. Highway division replaced the dump truck pro, uh, body for forty-five thousand, that's in there. Reevaluation for forty. Another hot topic is the highway division's looking for a traffic signal replacement for a hundred thousand, estimated. This will replace the age and frequently failing traffic signal at the corner of Main, Middle Six, and Fairview. Rick's here to answer any questions on that, he's been working on it. Any ideas?
So you're saying that those traffic lights that are there are our responsibility?
Yes. Rick, you want to tell them the history?
Well, it's not my history, we, we're responsible for, uh, on Main Street through the Delta State Road, we're responsible for the traffic signals at Free Stone, and if you're going north all the way to Field Street, those are the responsibility of the town authority, the ones at, at Main and up sixty-six of the streets. Back some time ago, the state had offered, um, if we gave them, I forget the exact number, thirty-seven thousand dollars, they would replace that traffic signal and take it over. Uh, I don't, I think they felt it wasn't our, I don't, I think we came up with a deal, but it was gonna be a staggering deal. But the reality here is this, we had an issue this past fall, every time it would rain, that traffic signal would go off. Um, we ended up finding out it was, it's, it's beeped badly, and we're gonna spend right now three thousand dollars just to temporarily fix. But that signal, as we talk about complete streets and safety and this and that, the other thing, I mean, it's right at your, on your schools, it's, it's a signal that, that I've identified for many years that needs to be replaced, and it's not there. Keep in the back of your mind, certainly something that's gonna have to get done.
We did send a letter to the state, and they did say that they would help us with it, but it's far in the future.
Probably very far.
We did, we did request, yep. Um, Kathy Heron did ask, and I sent it to the selectmen for a speed, um, sign, so make sure you got that in your email.
Uh, the senior center, kitchen upgrades for ten thousand dollars. I guess per the Chatham Health District, uh, the required upgrades would be a commercial stove, exhaust, and some minor plumbing modifications, which Senior Center hasn't asked us for anything in a long time, so I don't see why we wouldn't do that. You saw the LoSIP improvements for parking recreation and some parking lot areas, and I wanted to talk about the water sewer department, you covered a lot of it. The tie-in bond report is probably, what, three years old now? We gotta, yeah, you need, you got a whole new board here, you gotta act on it sooner or later, come up with a subcommittee and find out some direction, you want to have a water and sewer. And we met with NBC, that didn't go over very well, and now NBC's got their own problems, and the rates are going up, and...
Our street goes under, and we're all kicking in there.
So, it'd be nice if the board of selectmen come up with a committee soon, and even it takes you till December to figure out where you want it, something, you need to give them some direction here. Resource recovery, to do some facility improvements and replace containers for five thousand and nine thousand. The commission members cut from all the expenditures that we requested, we cut, uh, one million three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars from everybody's requests, and we only put in a total of a million for, uh, departments, and then the water sewer, obviously, that's a bigger number, it's two thousand, one hundred, I mean, two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's all I got, any questions? Ralph?
I was at the meeting when you talked about them, I don't have any questions.
Well, the commission would like to thank Rick Kelsey for all the years, I've been on the board nineteen years, and Gary's been longer than me, we've dealt with Rick for many meetings, and it's been appreciative of his help, and, uh, we had a good time with all the meetings with him. So Rick, thank you for all your time, from me and Gary and the rest of the commission members over the years. Thank you.
Mike, the only thing I would point out, though, is that I, I know we have these conversations about the sidewalks, but I can only speak for myself, but I truly understand the need to have a yearly program, and it is difficult for me to say to do it this year, because we are putting almost a million into sidewalk, but my, my intent is to be on board with doing it next year and forward, because it, we have to address it. I mean, we know the numbers, and we gotta start hitting it, so it's, it's just hard to do it when you have a, you, you're putting a million dollars into it to say, this is the year you start, but it's my intention to say that we start it next year.
Well, just don't cut capital too much, because I just know down the years coming, I mean, we put a lot of money into it the last few years, through the loan, uh, from the loan process and stuff, but still, trucks are expensive, dump trucks are going up in price, and I started, they were seventy-six thousand dollars, now they're two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, fire trucks are five-hundred, and that's for a throwaway. You gotta start funding capital correctly. Your fields, the schools, you barely give them any money sometimes, so it's time to put some money, you gotta up capital, and let the people decide what they want to do. And these are their needs, these aren't wants.
Which is, keep in mind, we're talking about a year where we lost one-point-one million that was taken, boom, like that, so I, I understand, but you're talking...
And, yeah, I'm not gonna say what happened last election, we put a big bond question forward, and people wanted that, and people need to see, you need to do this stuff, these are needs, these are operational needs. You gotta, put it forward, see where it lands.
And just keep in mind, I, you know, I, I know, obviously, my role with the park, that we go through a lot with discussing about the park, but four million of that bond was, was indeed capital improvement, so it's not, it's not just the park.
Well, that was some of the board of selectmen's things, they want, they were talking about sidewalks, and then the road came up, it was supposed to be Brownstone Avenue, now it's Spring Street. Really, capital out of that ten million dollars was five-hundred thousand dollars for building repairs, furnaces, condensers, some other things. Of the ten million dollars, five-hundred thousand was really for stuff that we do here.
And one-point-six million dollars for the capital lease program that you mentioned, which is this year.
For the trucks, yes, and the police cars and stuff.
You know, and with regards to water, you know, I, I've already told Jim that I'd like to be probably with Jim, working on, you know, the situation with the water, but it, it isn't gonna be a, a two-month meet and discussion, it's a significant...
It's a very big undertaking, and as I said, give yourself six months or longer, and you just need to come up with an answer next budget time, to say this is where we want to go, it's a huge undertaking.
Now, when you look at, you know, when we're talking about the million dollars a year, now, I know that I'm one of the bigger users in, in the town, but you're dr... But, you know, you're, you're talking four, four hundred dollars a user, if you only put that million on the, on the users, it's, that's a significant hit, so, I, you know, strategically, we have to do it in some manner.
Exactly.
And the town's getting old. If you drive around, it's not like it used to be when I grew up in the seventies, it's getting old, and money needs to be put into our infrastructure.
And we, and we are, and I, and I know that, that when our commission comes, we appreciate all the work that you and your commissioners do, Michael, but I think it is important to acknowledge, which you did a few minutes ago, that we have been doing a lot to improve our town, and, um, millions of dollars, particularly, um, when there's few users of those facilities, um, is, is not easy, but we have done some, and we will continue to do so. And I think that the town needs to decide as the users of water, the users of sewer, um, how they want to pay for it, and if they want it to continue the way that it is. You know, we never have an annual meeting of sewer users, um, but they are the ones that pay the bills. It's not this board that pays those bills, it's not general taxation that pays those bills, it's typically only the users, but they don't have a separate voice on this. Um, and it, the, the other element that we have never talked about, and it's something that I think we should, this board takes care of policy, takes care of finances, takes care of, of passing ordinances, there are many, many duties that this board of selectmen have, including being the authority for water and the authority for sewer. In many communities, you have a separate authority for water. In Cromwell, the fire department and the water department, and I believe sewer, Michael, are all one department, and they charge a separate tax to the users. So, when I say there's different ways of approaching it, we can't think of the way we've been doing business, we have to think of other ways, other mechanisms, perhaps other structures, that would be appropriate and can be helpful toward moving the needs forward and, and meeting them. So I hope that the committee is able to do that, I think they're committed, and I know Rick Scharr indicated an interest as well, so, uh, we'll do everything we can to help them. But it goes beyond just what we need, it, it goes to how we do it, and if what we're doing is the right way to do it, then we continue. But I always believe that you have to take a look and analyze how you're doing things, and whether or not it's the best.
I'm glad you're gonna subcommittee to come up with a plan, and some ideas, because that's what we need right now, which is a report that's been sitting on at us for three years.
Well, we have a subcommittee, one member passed away, another member resigned, and I'm not sure if the third member could meet alone. So, um, we're gonna have new board, and we have new members of that committee that's already been established, so, thanks for your recommendations, and I know you met a lot.
No more committees.
Yeah, there we go.
Gary, you got your hand?
Yeah, no, just, you know, I know water and sewer stuff, man, major issues that we're, that we're gonna have to deal with, but again, I hope it doesn't get caught up into the only capital, and thank goodness, no, but I'm just saying, if you get caught into something like that, and all of a sudden, our capital, which we've been fighting for for years, and thank God for some of the, you know, we, we've gone through the process of not funding, and, and, and we see what we can get, you know, by, by our, our everyday expenses, and then all of a sudden, we do the bond program, which thank God we have, because it, it, it got us the stuff that we needed, and the fixing, you know, of a lot of different buildings and structures. I'm, I, I think we, we battle ourselves each year when we meet, and, and with all the department heads, and like Mike said, it's, we hear the same ritual and the same request, year in, year out, because we haven't been able to meet the library's little request or the, the senior, senior center's request, but because we get caught up into big projects, and, you know, we have the, thank goodness, we have the bond issue that goes through, but we were telling people, if you don't put in and be part of it, and, and Ricky, you took, you came into it, and, and the public works joined in, and if they didn't, we were, this, I think we would have been caught up with, this is our capital, and everything else goes, gets zeroed out, and I think, we can't afford that, I think, and we, we went to, I don't know how many years ago, to the charter, and tried to get it, some kind of amendment in the charter that says, we would, it would take it away from the selectmen trying to, on those tough years, or, or, or whatever, and it would be automatic if three-quarters of a mil, or a mil, is automatic for capital improvement. And I think that that, you know, it's hard to, to deal with, even with a new board or, or an existing board, because you don't know what tomorrow, what, you know, what's gonna break, and all of a sudden, our capital seemed to be, all of a sudden, being that, we were, we were the Band-Aid group, we would, we wouldn't get, be able to fund anything unless it broke, and that's not a way to run capital, you have to maintain structures, and I just, I can't stress that enough, and with the idea that we're gonna, we're in a jam with our water and sewer, there's no question, and if it doesn't, if, if the bills come onto us, you're gonna depreciate our values, those, those who are on water and sewer, if they get out with, the billing is, is outrageous, what's the property value of those, what, what's my property gonna be worth, to somebody who can't afford the water and the, the sewer use? who can't afford the water and the, and sewer use? You know, I think you're gonna start seeing that back. So, I mean, you have to, it is, it is a big issue, but, you know, is it because we, we haven't prorated our, our fees along the years? Some would say yes. Is it because somebody else is controlling the, the water gate? Others would say that. We, we had that battle when we, we gave up our reservoir years ago. But couldn't we have funded a, a, a treatment plant, with the state mandating the mandates that they, they would've mandated on our, our water purity or whatever? I don't think we could've done that as a small group. No, I mean, it, it is, but I, I am committed to capital, I think we have to be, um, but I don't know what the answer is, I really don't, so, you know, and that's, it's frustrating.
Well, I do think, as you said, Gary, some of the, some of the financial ways of funding capital have improved, and I think that our finance director has been very helpful in terms of the immediate needs, in terms of, of vehicles. I mean, I can remember talking to you and Michael and other members, we didn't have the money to buy trucks every year. So, because interest rates have been low, we've been able to have a successful purchase program, and I can tell you that the vehicles are in much better shape, the fleet is in good shape. Um, and that's been an accomplishment. And I also think that in terms of bonded indebtedness, as we proceed, the bonds begin to fall off, the ones that we're gonna be buying will, will increase, but there is, as Tom and I were discussing this week, um, we have to keep it at that level funding, as you said. So if something falls off, then that's when you have to increase. And, and many communities do a bond program. That is how they are able to fund. It's not that they spike, it's that they try to keep that level funding, and they work with their financial advisors, so that as those dollars come and are paid off, another, right, which goes to your point of a quarter of a million, or a half a million, or whatever it might be, that is allocated every year, that, um, you report out to the community as to what you're gonna be doing. So I think we're getting there, but as you've pointed out very well over the years, it's been a building process. So, we're, we're on a good place, and we need to continue, and I hear that very loud and clear. Um, what people don't understand, and I think they're beginning to understand it, is the state situation is just another monkey wrench that comes along, and really has affected the moderate towns. I don't think it's affecting the very rich towns, I don't think it's affecting the very poor cities as much as it's affecting more or less the moderate-sized suburban-type towns. And, um, we have to fight back on that, and you can't accept that those dollars that are due to you are not coming to you. Um, and I know that everybody in this room does their part to make that known, but they're your monies that go to the state and are supposed to come back to you. The other thing I just wanna add is that these mandates and the requirements that are particularly on Board of Education, are particularly coming from Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, um, and other units that we don't have time to talk about, they cost a tremendous amount of money, and the state has not followed through with the funding that's necessary, which begs the question, do you have to follow all those rules if there's no penalty? I mean, you follow the ones that are public safety oriented, but not all these things are public safety oriented. It's opinions that have been made into law that, that, um, you know, we follow the laws best we can, but it's, it's changing.
You know, and the other thing, um, as we talked on Saturday, I shared the debt curve that we have, which we put out when we went for bonding. It's just tough, because we have a couple more years before the bond, the school bond really starts to drop off, and then you have some room. But we gotta get between here and those two years.
It's a good discussion. Very good.
Just wanted to add, I think there was one question about, uh, share my insight on the windows, I seemed a little bit different in the information than I had. I know I worked a lot with, uh, Dr. O'Reilly and, uh, Ann Burke on the Board of Ed, as well as with Paul, and, um, Dr. O'Reilly stated that he, you know, was very interested in trying to get that window project completed. Um, like I said, there was some funds still available for the last project, so, we're trying to work, but we have not gone back to the, to the, um, consultant and had him go read through the process. We wanted to make sure that we got up through the April timeframe, of the, you know, everyone was interested in keeping that, before we had people outlay their time and energy and trying to pull that together. So I know that, uh, that, uh, the consultant has come up with a plan of how he would try to roll that out. Um, we usually, we've been utilizing the EZIQC process, which is a bidded process through Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, they bid the state, uh, through a, uh, per-unit contract, and, uh, we have utilized that venue to do it the last time. We've utilized a, uh, architect that the town is used on, the town on the board is using on a few projects, uh, here in town, his name's Dave Eddy, and he would kinda come up with the design approval, and the Board of Ed has engaged him to do that, uh, design, um, and, uh, to come up with it, so they could move forward, um, you know, as they, as they know money's come available. Uh, the strategics of it, we have to see, we don't know the necessarily exact cost of the windows, um, so possibly you could acquire the windows in this year, and then, and then do the service when the money becomes available in July, based on the amount of money you had before. So there is a possibility, if, you know, all goes through with that number, um, I still don't think it's a closed window of saying you can't accomplish it this year, it may or may not be, I don't, I'm not sure, but we would, I know that, uh, Dr. O'Reilly would definitely be interested in trying to get it accomplished.
I'm just gonna, I'm just, was relaying what Paul seemed to convey to, convey to us, so, I, I mean, I, hopefully we can, but...
Yeah, I think it's open, but not, you know, can't guarantee it, obviously.
Well, I think, I think too, Tom, what's important is, we know that, as Michael pointed out, there's a, there's a lot of other things, so if we put aside the money, let's say, for the windows, but then, and again, theoretically, the windows don't get done, then the other things don't get done either. And so we, that, but we wait, and we do it when, when the money becomes available. So if we could maybe get an answer as to definite...
But if you can't...
When you say an open window, you mean?
What I'm saying, but, but again, if, if, if you get to the same point, and, uh, so if you don't approve it at this point, or you move it, you're gonna come in the next year and do the same thing, because the window is between now and July first, because you have to order them. So, there is a potential open window, based on the funds that we'd already had available, we may be able to acquire those, yeah, the open windows, the window.
You gotta make some kind of commitment now, earlier than later, I mean, this we do some nice, but it's far off. You gotta, you know we're gonna pay for it in July, you need to make the commitment as a reward, say we're not gonna cut this.
Yeah, because there's, there's two, there's a work that needs to go in to get it accomplished. You have, there's a environmental consultant that goes through, he bids out to the environmental, um, uh, bidder on the demolition, then that gets all reviewed, there's tests that have to be done, then when the holes are open, they're covered, the, the windows have to be acquired, have to be on-site, then another party comes in and installs the windows, and checks all that, and there's more testing. So there's a lot of components to it. Um, so that being, that being said, you know, that's why it needs to be, uh, approved. When we had done it last time, which was great, but we didn't have, we were able to do a supplemental appropriation in May, and therefore put an order in place before, so that we, we're definitely guaranteed everything in July. In this instance, you would have a vote ready to know that you have the money available for July first, if, uh, the money was to be approved at this point.
Any other questions? Any other comments from Capitol?
If the window's still open.
Um, I had also left on your tables, information from Youth Services. There were some questions, and, um, so we, uh, Mary put together a packet for you to fully explain some of the programming and grants, so thank you, Mary, for getting that ready. Library had given us a packet, and, um, we had some presentations from the other departments too. So if there's nothing else tonight, uh, we'll close the workshop, we will not have a workshop tomorrow night, so, um, you have the night off.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn?
May.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.